Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our Town Hall for Maricopa City Council Candidates. We welcome our candidates tonight, Andre LaFond and Amber Learman for a Facebook Live session with the voters just weeks before the election. Andre and Amber are vying for the final open seat on council in a runoff election on November 3rd. We encourage our viewers to submit their questions for the candidates now. And to start off, we'll ask each candidate to give a short introduction to themselves. Ladies first. So Amber, would you kick us off here?
Absolutely. I want to thank Inmaricopa for inviting us here tonight and giving us an opportunity to speak to our community about why we want to run for council. I am a longtime resident of Maricopa, living here for 17 years and serving the community in different ways as a school counselor and volunteering. I have four children, and my daughter attends Grand Canyon University, and then I have a 17-year-old son, and a 15-year-old daughter, and a 13-year-old son. And I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about why I want to run for council, which is to preserve the values that I've experienced living here and to protect the community from other ideas that are coming in and preserve the values that I've had since I've been here.
Thank you. Andre?
I want to thank Inmaricopa as well for hosting. I absolutely appreciate it. My name is Andre LaFond, and I am running for Maricopa City Council. Running because, simply put, I just started my family. I have a three-month-old son who's sitting at home, hopefully still asleep, with my wife Kaylee. We moved here about six years ago. I'm looking forward for the possibility of helping support this community I've absolutely fallen in love with. I want to bring my experience as a veteran, as an Eagle Scout, as a small business owner, to council to help continue the amazing growth we see here in Maricopa, help continue to grow this culture, this little oasis that we all live and love. So I hope to earn the seat on council, and thank you very much.
You're welcome. So we'll start off with a local issue. It's another item in the election, and that would be, do you support or oppose Proposition 452 to award Southwest Gas a 25-year franchise to provide natural gas here in the city? And why? So Andre, we'll go back to you.
Well, I'll be honest, I'm still reading up on that to make an educated decision. It's not something that I want to jump on in opinion, and once I have a solid view on it, I'll move forward with my decision.
Okay.
I agree. I'm still learning about that, too.
Okay. All right. Another local issue, and we encourage our viewers to submit their questions, and we will get them right before the candidates as soon as we can. Just mention of the word apartments in Maricopa seems to set off some people. With the first apartments under construction right now, where do you stand on them? And we'll go back to Amber.
Yeah. So when I moved here, there was a lot of talk about the master-planned communities that are coming into the houses that were being built. And so it kind of reminds me of that time, where change is really hard. People have a hard time accepting change. And so when the master-planned communities were coming, people were really having a hard time with that, and I see apartments being the same. I think it's an opportunity to provide the full cycle of life for our community members. So we have people who are retiring and want to downsize. We have students that are graduating from high school and college and aren't ready to buy a home. So I'm really excited about the apartments. I think they provide good opportunities for our community. And I know one of the apartments is going by Central Arizona College, and that'll provide housing for them. And also, you know, when we get our hospital and when we get larger businesses, we need different types of housing options for employees when they move to Maricopa. So I think it'll be a great addition to our community.
Okay. Thank you. Andre?
So I have to agree with Amber. I believe the diversified housing that is moving into Maricopa is a very good thing. We can't sustain our growth as a community on being just simply a single-family home residence. It's not going to help us pull in larger employees or larger employers. If we want to see economic opportunity here in Maricopa and bring in the incomes, the quality employment outside of just hourly wages at a local retail, we need to have the diversified housing that only comes with apartments and townhouses. It provides opportunities for our law enforcement officers who are living in Maricopa that may not want to buy a house just yet. Same with our firefighters, single individuals, students who are going to our community college here in Maricopa. We can't continue to require everyone to either commute into Maricopa to work or buy or rent an entire house. I'm a Realtor by trade right now, and I'll tell you, there's not nearly enough homes available for the demand, let alone affordable rental housing opportunities for those that can't afford to buy a house right now. Should we shut out these people from our community? I'd like to have more inclusive opportunity for everyone.
Excellent. Thank you. I wanted to ask you both, how much time have you spent reviewing the city budget and city code? Do you feel like, as voters head to the polls in a couple of weeks, that you will come into the job if you're elected and have good knowledge of those two documents? I forget who I asked last time.
I believe it's mine, Andre. So I've spent hours reviewing both, and I will say between that and the fact that, you know, I've gone through the Maricopa Citizens Leadership Academy to also have a good understanding of the workings of our city, and my experience with our CERT program, and my experience with the Citizens Police Academy training that I've also gone through. Just generally being involved, being at every city council meeting that I can possibly get to, including virtually, I believe I have a strong basis of knowledge for moving into the seat, because there is no training manual for city council. When you're elected, your first day, you're making decisions, so you got to jump into the fire and know what you're doing.
Okay. Amber?
I also feel I'm prepared for day one. I had the opportunity to attend city budget meetings, also city council meetings where they're going over those items. And I've also had the opportunity to meet with city manager Rick Horst, reviewing city budget items and building projects, and so I feel ready on those topics as well.
Okay. I will come back to you, Amber, with another city question. Does Maricopa need more police officers? And if so, how would you propose that we pay for them?
You know, I was thinking recently that when I moved to Maricopa, we didn't even have a police department. The sheriff's department was serving our community at that time, and so it's been exciting to see the development of our department and its growth, and its professionalism has been awesome. So with the current growth of our community, which is absolutely incredible, 229 single-family home units or permits were given in September, and so we are just growing so quickly. So I can't imagine the department staying the same size that it is right now with the growth that we're experiencing. So I anticipate continued growth of the department with the growth of our community.
And how do we pay for that?
Well, we are really working hard at bringing larger businesses to Maricopa and expanding that tax base. And so I believe that with the natural growth of the community and being proactive in bringing large businesses here, our budget is going to continue to grow.
Okay. Andre?
So I will agree once again with Amber. Our community is growing by leaps and bounds, over 1,000 housing permits a year. We are one of the single fastest-growing cities in Arizona. We are one of the single fastest-growing cities in the country. We are the poster child for bust to boom, and it's not going to stop anytime soon. Again, as a Realtor, I see the housing going left, right, and sideways. And you can't list a house right now without getting multiple offers, because everyone wants to live in Maricopa. Maricopa offers such wonderful opportunities. But with this growth comes increased need to hire, train, and have in place the professionals that provide services to our community, including our first responders. Our police department has been doing a wonderful job. I also want to give a shout-out to our fire department. They, too, are doing an amazing job with everything that's going on in our growth. But our hiring practices are not staying up, our hiring budget is not staying up with the growth we're seeing. Last year, we hired one new officer. Again, we're building 1,000-plus homes a year and average occupancy of 2 to 2.5 people. That's a lot of people for one additional officer, and that officer actually replaced an officer that moved to Tempe. So it really wasn't a new position. We do need to grow our tax base, which we are. With the increased revenue that we're seeing from businesses moving into Maricopa, from the new strip malls opening up, the new commercial opportunities, and the new population moving in with their tax base, we can afford to increase what we're spending without changing the percentages on our budget.
I'm just going to follow up with you. I'll follow up with you, Andre, first. Do we have enough police in the city right now?
I would say yes, but from my conversations with both police leadership and the police union, I'm endorsed by the Fraternal Order of Police, which is the single largest union in Maricopa for the police officers. They are concerned that we are potentially starting to stretch ourselves too thin.
What I appreciated about my conversation with Chief Stall is that he had shared with me that they keep really specific data, obviously. And so they're really keeping specific information that helps them determine their needs. And also, I know the city manager communicates with Chief Stall regularly about the needs of the department. Recently, they just approved, the city council approved, to build a training facility for the police officers here in Maricopa. So they continue to talk about the needs of the department and prioritize those needs, and I'm confident that, you know, Maricopa is one of the safest cities in Arizona. I think the most recent thing I read was the fourth safest city in our state. And I'm confident that with the council we have now, it will continue to remain one of the safest cities in Maricopa, and we'll do everything that we can in our decision-making to make sure that that happens.
Okay. We have a question from Bill, asking, what is Proposition 416 and 417? What is it for? How will it be used? And how much has been collected so far?
I believe that's your turn.
I believe that's the transportation. That's what I believe that that is. And so Brett Roberts, our state representative, is really forging the way with 347 and helping with funds to create safe roads in Maricopa. Also, the Maricopa Association of Government is completing a study right now for 347 so that we can use the information gathered from that study to present and position ourselves to gain funds that we're in competition with with other cities. And so I know those are important propositions, and I believe that they're partly why there's a delay for 347 as well. So...
Okay. Andre?
I believe she's correct on that one. I didn't specifically remember that those are the numbers for it, but thank you for jogging my memory on that one. And again, I can't disagree with her on that. Pushing forward for funding for our traffic is going to be paramount if we want to continue seeing the economic growth. I absolutely support any opportunity that sustainably and sensibly provides funds for our safety and our transportation development. Infrastructure is a big deal for me. I want to make sure that 30-plus thousand residents that are traversing 347 daily from Maricopa are safe and able to get to work and come home.
Do you have any other ideas to improve the safety on 347?
Unfortunately, a lot of that is specifically out of the council's hands. I will give Maricopa and our existing council so much credit on being the middlemen between, or middle persons between the Maricopa Association of Governors, the Gila River, Penal County. No one individually can do 347. There's two different counties, multiple jurisdictions involved in it, along with ultimately finding the financing. We need to be able to produce, as a county, a good chunk of money to present for future grants from the federal agencies, and we're not going to do that without tax revenue. Unfortunately, everything takes money, and doing it affordably is also a key. I give Maricopa, or Maricopa, Arizona, credit. We don't go over budget often on our roadways, but to improve safety, at the end of the day, folks, please just drive us some common sense. Don't cruise in the left lane. Move over to the right. Don't try to block people from driving, and use your turn signal.
Thank you. Amber, how about you? Do you have any ideas to improve 347?
I was going to say, no camping on the left lane. And I know that people move here from all around the country, and so not everyone is familiar with that law. But I think that it is important to respect other people, and so the slow lane is on the right, the pass lane's on the left, and I think it would help if we all did that.
Welcome back to our Town Hall with city council candidates Andre LaFond and Amber Learman. We had some technical difficulties there that we hope we've straightened out. Please continue to ask your questions, and just remember that we will post a video later when we're done of the entire event. So if you happen to miss a question that we asked or an answer, you can tune in later and see the video to hear the answer. So we're going to continue, and I think we're back with Amber. Amber, question from Facebook Live. Could you tell us about your current volunteer work? Last week, last month, yesterday?
Sure. So two things I'd like to share is, I sponsor the Copa Closet Program here in Maricopa, and it's a program that was started to assist students K through 12 who have basic needs that need to be met. And so we have community members who donate hygiene products, clothes, shoes, school supplies, food to the Copa Closet, and then we are able to meet students who have those needs. The goal of Copa Closet is to remove any barriers to learning, so we don't want students distracted by the needs that they might have from their studies. So it's hard to think about, but there are students in Maricopa who don't own a jacket or they don't have socks or whatever, or school supplies. And so it's a really exciting program, and our city has been absolutely amazing in donating the supplies that our students need. So that has been really exciting, and I was working on that this week, and we got some exciting donations this week, which was awesome. But another exciting organization I'm working with is the Maricopa Veteran Care Center, and I serve on the board there. And we are being proactive and working on expanding the services for our veterans to include counseling and support groups and didactic groups for veterans so that they don't have to leave Maricopa to get all of their needs met. And I'm really excited about that. We have, we're shooting for a starting date of March, and so we have volunteers that are ready to serve our veterans, and like I said, I'm looking forward to having that happen.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your volunteer work in the city, too.
You're welcome.
Andre?
Well, I want to start off by saying thank you very much for everything that you do on that, especially as a veteran. I absolutely appreciate your efforts and your dedication to assisting my brothers and sisters. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'll be honest, I don't currently have any ongoing volunteer programs. I have in the past been active with assisting others in their volunteer work, from putting bikes together for needy kids in Maricopa to helping out with and participating in Walking for the Cure. My brother's a cancer survivor. Unfortunately, I've got family members who have been lost to cancer, so it's something that's near and dear to my heart. I also make sure to, whenever I see opportunities online, to get the word out to family and friends that are in financial capabilities to really help sponsor volunteer programs. I make sure to get them on the horn and share information out. I love the opportunities to assist with programs like the Blue Star Mothers, or if you're involved in any way with charity work in Maricopa, you probably know who Mary Grace is, and I love offering what assistance I can when I can to her for her programs.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to ask you, Andre, if you could pick any company to bring 5,000 jobs to Maricopa, wave the wand, and they're on their way, which company would you choose and why?
Well, so wave my wand and why? I would love to see company, green technology companies, whether it be companies, I'll pick a large name like Tesla. I'd love to see a company of that nature brought into Maricopa, mostly on their support sector side, to provide technology jobs, green jobs, higher-paying opportunities, and a future-proof company. It's not a, we'll call it 20th-century employee company that is potentially going to be replaced tomorrow with a website.
Okay. Thank you. Amber, who would you bring here?
I want a hospital. We need a hospital here in Maricopa, like a full functioning...
That's a big hospital.
It is. It is a big hospital. But I would love a hospital. And then I also was going to say an IT company. We need technology sources here in Maricopa, and like I said, like you were saying, is that we want something that's not going to be replaced, something that's going to be long-lasting. So we're similar thinking.
And so as prospective council members, how do you do that? How do you attract that company? We already know how difficult it is to attract a hospital here. But how do you attract that company that will be here for 50 years, 100 years, and grow jobs here?
Part of that is having the infrastructure in place, having the diverse housing in place. So really building those things in our community so we're ready for those. And when, you know, those organizations come and look at Maricopa, we are shovel-ready sites. We're ready to go. We have everything in place. There's no barriers. There's no obstacles. Those have been removed. It's a smooth transition. I know our city manager is very welcoming and very yes to businesses, and so I think we have a lot of the places and a lot of the pieces in place, and we're continuing to make decisions that welcome those kind of large businesses.
So my campaign has three pillars, and those three pillars are in place as a determining factor to help try to bring in businesses of that nature. My first priority is public safety. Large-scale businesses, small-scale businesses, and the population want to have a safe community and lower insurance rates. We provide that with Maricopa and continued investment in that. We'll ensure that going on into the future as we grow, we can continue to provide those protective services and those lower interest rates, or those lower insurance rates for our community and for any prospective employer coming in. My next is investment in quality smart growth, investment in infrastructure, investment in transportation here in Maricopa, where we can make the biggest changes and the biggest bang for the buck. Making sure that we can bring in the updated, the new opportunities for infrastructure. We were built in 2003. That's where we really started from, from a small village of 1,500 to 55,000-plus today in a very short amount of time. Regardless of bang to buck or boom to bust and then boom again, we are huge from where we started. But our infrastructure was built on the end-of-the-20th-century principles. And so moving forward, making sure that we continue to invest in the quality and push our utility providers to do the same. We experienced internet outage here. We have that all over Maricopa, and it's an unfortunate nature for businesses, especially the technology businesses that might be looking to move in here if they can't count on a quality broadband. So helping work with our utilities to ensure that we're getting the best equipment into Maricopa and the highest quality. And that brings us to the economic growth that we'd like to see, to support businesses like that. When they feel safe and they know that their infrastructure's safe, they know that they have a population that isn't worried about housing, isn't worried about losing opportunities, the diversified housing that we're looking to promote and bring in. All of that channels together to equal quality employment for our Maricopa citizens, and that also feeds into safer 347. Because if we can provide the jobs here, we can take hundreds or thousands of people off the road every day. Again, 30,000-plus people are traversing 347 a day. If we can keep some of them here, that's less congestion, that's less risk on 347.
Okay. Thank you. We have a question from Facebook Live. Do you support a repeal of the city ordinance that allows firearms in City Hall?
Well, I anticipated this question, and I can guess who it came from. I will start this by saying that I am a firearm owner. I am a concealed carrier. I am a proponent for the Second Amendment. And ultimately, what my views are personally or politically on that are not relevant to the discussion. What it comes down to is, if that were to come to city council again, and I'm sitting on city council, I want to talk with the expert matter, the experts on the policy, the experts on the law, and the experts on the safety. That's discussions with the city management. That's discussions with the city legal council. That's discussions with our public safety. That is how I want to govern. I want to make my decisions not based on my personal opinions, but based on my experience and taking the knowledge of the people who run our city into consideration moving forward. So I cannot answer that question, yes or no, because I have not had that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Amber?
I can answer that question, because my children and I go to those buildings, and I would absolutely not want that to change at all, because I don't want any soft spots in Maricopa. I want to feel safe in our city, and changing that would not make me feel safe.
Okay. All right. Very good. Let me propose a hypothetical to you, Amber. You live in...
Altera.
Altera, right? Yes. If you could make one quality of life improvement in your development, what do you think that might be?
Well, one thing I'm really excited about is at Copper Sky. They are building that area a lot with a hotel, a shopping center, a senior center, and I think apartment living is going in that area, too. And I'm really excited about that, because I like to go walking mornings, evenings, and so to see that area develop and have some energy over there. I already love the energy at Copper Sky. I go there a lot. And so to see that continue to develop, I think that's going to bring energy to my neighborhood, and I'm really looking forward to that.
Okay. Thank you. And Andre, I believe you live in Rancho Adorado. What would you like to see happen there to improve the quality of life in your community?
So we have the wash running through the middle, the right dab in the middle of Rancho. I would love to see that turned into walking space, park space, open fields for soccer, for kids, you know, play stickball. And I know that Rick Horst and the city are working to potentially make that happen for all the wash space in Maricopa, to turn it into walking paths, turn it into green space for our community, and I'd love to promote that.
Okay. Andre, you said earlier that you're a veteran, and as you know, and I'm sure you know as well, Amber, November, next month, is National Veterans and Military Families Month. Andre, what's the most impactful thing you would do for the veterans of Maricopa if you were to get on city council?
Well, there's not any particular single thing. Before I ran, before it was announced, one of the things that I always keyed... Before I ran, before it was announced, one of the things that always keyed in my head is that the veteran center that Maricopa has graciously provided for a dollar rent, our old library, was seeing its age. And I wanted to see a potential new opportunity, or at least reinvestment, into that property for our veterans. Fortunately, that has been solved, with the old library being rehabbed after our new one is opened, to provide for both our seniors and our veterans. And oftentimes, seniors and veterans are one and the same. So having that combined facility is going to be wonderful for both groups. I would like to see the city welcoming in and sponsoring the different organizations that often will come through and provide the space and provide potential opportunities for veteran health screenings, veteran outreach programs. I will say, I'm a disabled veteran. I live with chronic pain, day in, day out, every day, and it progressively gets worse. And it's something that I will end up facing major surgery in the future. With that, navigating the difficulties of the VA system is a headache. And finding the people that can assist you, although you can often find them, they're often overworked. So if Maricopa continues to do what it does and sponsor programs that bring in VA outreach to Maricopa, I'd love to see a little more of that. And that goes a long way to help our veterans.
Okay, thank you. Amber, most impactful thing that you would want to do for veterans from City Council?
I think removing the obstacles and barriers, partly what you're describing. And by bringing services to Maricopa, first of all, our veterans oftentimes, most of the time, have to jump on 347 to go get their services. So the more services that we can have here in Maricopa, that's removing one obstacle. Also, one thing I'm excited about, the services that we're planning on offering, is we want to provide services to both women and male veterans, because oftentimes, there isn't services for both groups. And so we're being really intentional about providing services to our female veterans as well. But bringing in the mental health services, I think, is really important, not just for our veterans, but for their spouses and their family members, because oftentimes, there's a lot of stress on the whole family. Or if the one spouse is deployed, the other spouse is here. And so we plan on having a support group for the veterans, but also for family members as well. So I'm really excited, just talking about it right now, to get our veterans here in Maricopa more services than they have now.
And I'm sorry, I'll quickly, that's through the volunteer organization-
Yes, yeah.
Could you say that-
The Maricopa Veteran Care Center-
Perfect.
With Crystal Allen O'John.
Perfect.
Yeah, I mean, veteran suicide is a huge problem. I forget what the actual statistic is, it's many minutes, not so many minutes of the day we are losing our veterans to suicide. Is there anything more specifically that we can do as a community about that? And this goes back to your mental health concerns for veterans.
Absolutely. I think making sure our veterans know what resources are here in Maricopa, making sure they have that information, and removing those obstacles. So, yeah, just because we know it's out there, how do I access it? And what's the timeline? You know, can I get in, or is there a long waitlist? So more services we provide in Maricopa, I think more of those barriers are going to be removed as far as waking appointments, accessing service. And so it's urgent, which is what you're describing. And so I'm excited to be a part of bringing those services here.
Anything to add, Andre?
Making sure that either through City Hall or through our public library, that that information is available and those programs are available to our veterans. And again, having a quality veteran center, a lot of times, helping to stop the suicide rate among veterans is often making sure that they know that someone's there that has their six. And promoting and supporting our veteran groups. We're fortunate that we have both the American Legion and the VFW here in Maricopa, and giving them the voice to let other veterans know that they're there and they're available. I'm glad to see that we're going to be doing a veterans parade, it looks like, because that little thing helps let other veterans that are suffering know that there's people out there that know what they're going through and that they can reach out.
Okay, thank you. A question that is debated nationally, but certainly has implications for people here in Maricopa. Should the government require health insurers to cover pre-existing conditions?
Yes, absolutely. At the end of the day, everyone in some way or form has a pre-existing condition. And so if a child is born with diabetes, having a barrier to him ever being able to have proper insurance or easy access to insurance outside of always having to work for an employer, entrepreneurs, Maricopa is full of small businesses. And as a small business owner myself, insurance is a concern. And pre-existing conditions before the ban on them hampered these small businesses from getting quality insurance for themselves or their family. Because if you have, again, a diabetic in the family, or a history of cancer, or you tripped and fell and hit your head at some point, anything could become a barrier to quality medical coverage. And I'm very happy that that's been eliminated as a concern.
Amber?
Absolutely. I think COVID exposed everyone's vulnerabilities in different ways. And we need to make sure that we are continuing to be concerned about everyone in our community and not groups of people in our community. So the answer is absolutely yes.
Okay. I have a question from Nancy. What is Maricopa's biggest challenge, and how can you help? Amber, sorry.
Well, we talked about veterans already, but that was the first thing that popped in our mind. We want to make sure that our veterans are taken care of. We've already talked about that. So I'll talk about seniors. I am passionate about our senior community here in Maricopa and giving them an opportunity to allow us to benefit from their skill sets and their talents and their life experience that they've had. And so I know Bob is really excited about this topic as well, but we want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for seniors to make their stamp on Maricopa and leave a legacy here in our community. And I think that needs to, it's already happening, but it can be offered more opportunities to do that.
Okay. Andre?
Transportation. We talked a bit about 347 and the concerns there. And ultimately, that is part of what has been described as a hamper to possible hospital in the near future, because they need to have a quality and safe ability to transfer patients in and out, and to know that they can bring in safely people from other communities, whether it be Casa Grande, from Stanfield, and the smaller communities that circle around us. Transportation also hampers our economic growth. Businesses that know that they can't rely solely on the workforce here in Maricopa, especially as we continue to diversify our housing, but we're not quite there yet, they need to be able to bring in people. And workers are going to be hesitant to transit on 347 if they know that every day it's an hour, and that every day there's a car accident. And unfortunately, the injuries and loss of life of residents and visitors alike is inexcusable at this point. So I want to continue Maricopa's focus on transportation and make sure that we're doing it the Maricopa way.
Okay. Let me just follow up on that. We had a question from somebody who would like a little more discussion on 347. She says there is growth all over Maricopa, we've agreed with that already.
Yep.
What do you think of the 347 plans and timeline?
Well, ultimately, I want to see 347 see an overpass at Rigs at a minimum, along with an expansion of six lanes. From the discussions that I've heard and the people I've talked with and what I've read, that seems to be the goalpost.
Okay.
I absolutely agree with that. I want to see that as a minimum. I'd love to see all the stoplights removed from 347, but I don't know if that's going to be a possibility. Timeline-wise, I've heard everything from five years to 10 years. So I've not heard anyone that really has a good idea on a solid timeline. I'm inclined, from my discussions and my understanding of the issues, to say that we'll probably see groundbreaking, and again, don't hold me to this, but within the next four or five years of any major efforts. But we just have to be patient. And I know a lot of people have concerns about our continued population growth in the meantime. We continue growing a population that's added fodder to our arguments that we need this now, and that will help us.
Okay.
I think 347 is our greatest, biggest growing pain in Maricopa. And anytime we, you know, someone moves to a young community that's growing, you're going to experience those growing pains. 347 includes so many different groups of people. So we have Maricopa County, Penal County, ADOT, Gila River, there are so many groups of people that are involved, it's going to take time. And we all know that, when you get those groups of people together, it's going to take time. So I also cannot offer a timeline, but I can tell you that our mayor and our city council is working really hard on this. We have a city council member that serves on three transportation communities, Brett Roberts, like I said, he's working very hard at the state capitol of bringing this issue to the forefront and making sure that people are aware of the urgency of the need of 347. And we are competing with other cities that want the same money that we have, and we're doing everything we can to position ourselves to get that money. And one of the ways that we did was to request the study done, so that we have accurate data to present as evidence of why that money should be coming to us. And so I think we're doing everything we can do, and I look forward to participating in that process and communicating with all the different partners of that and expediting this as quickly as we can.
We have a question from Danielle. I'll direct this at you, Amber, first. What is your position on the lack of public transportation, and how do you propose that Maricopa overcomes it?
That's a good question. I appreciate that. We have so many people moving here from all around our country. And so everyone comes with a different past experience about what they utilized in the city that they moved here from. And it's always exciting for me to talk to people and hear what their concerns are, what they love about Maricopa, but also what they miss about the city that they came from. And so transportation, obviously, is one of those things. And I know we have Comet, that is our transportation here in Maricopa. And I know that they have worked hard at expanding that program and making sure that we're servicing our community the best that we can. And so that's what I think that we're working on right now, is offering Comet.
Okay. Transportation in Maricopa is reasonably well-serviced by our Comet Shuttle. From its schedules to its on-call nature, really helping our kids get around to Copper Sky, helping our seniors, which is a big part of Comet, get to where they need to go, from grocery shopping to the library, to city functions, to just general socializing opportunities. Getting out of Maricopa, there previously was a van line, a bus line, unfortunately. There's no plans, I'm aware of, to bring that back, and that's outside of the city governance ability to control. There are a few third-party services that offer transportation in and out of Maricopa on a regular basis, from Uber to the Metro Valley Shuttle. Ultimately, I would love to see Amtrak have a line that stops in Phoenix, at least, near some bus stop or light rail, so we can hop on the Amtrak station that is right here and head into Phoenix. And that's controversial, because ultimately, we are the Phoenix Amtrak stop, and that could potentially limit the ability to advertise ourselves to people traversing from out-of-state into Maricopa. But the transportation opportunities for our workforce would be greatly improved at that.
Okay. Next question is from a sitting council member, Henry Wade. He points out that City Council is nonpartisan. Do you feel decisions you will make on council will always fall on your political affiliation, regardless of what that issue is or that vote is?
Well, I'll go back to the question on the Second Amendment in reference to in city facilities. Regardless of political affiliation, regardless of personal views, I want to look at the facts in place to make a determination. I want to know what my community thinks, because it is a deeply personal issue. There are a lot of people, such as yourself, that feels more comfortable knowing that you can take a firearm, or others might have a firearm in place. There are plenty of other people in our community that feel that that's very uncomfortable for them, that they don't like that. And finding out what the totality of our community wants, along with what makes sense and what's constitutional, that is my guiding principle. I don't care red, blue, Democrat, Republican, Green Party, Libertarian, we're all Maricopians, we're all community members. And ultimately, it's whatever's best for our community to move forward and grow. No, I'm staunchly nonpartisan when it comes to policies and activities for Maricopa, and I will stand by that if I'm elected.
Okay.
I agree. The role of a city council member is to represent their community members. I'm not there to represent myself, my personal beliefs, that's not the role. And I have so enjoyed, over this last year, talking to so many of our community members and hearing their concerns. Also, being a counselor in our community, I get to hear the things that people love about Maricopa and the ways that living here has alleviated stress in their life. But also, I get to hear about, you know, the things that are stressful about living in Maricopa. And I think it's a privilege to hear that information and make decisions that will alleviate stress on our community members. That's my goal. So I agree that I would not be bringing my personal values into decisions being made. I want to listen to our community members, what their values and beliefs are, and how we can make our community better to serve them.
Okay. Andrea asks, where do you stand on school lockdowns due to COVID? I'll go with you.
This is such a tough issue. So we obviously need to follow the guidelines set by our state, and we have. And so I know families feel very strongly about this issue, and we need to follow the guidelines that have been put in place. I know that, being a school counselor, I've seen the impact of some of the decisions that have been made. And it's difficult, it's difficult to see students struggle in many different ways, academically, socially, emotionally. But we need to continue to follow the guidelines that have been set by the state.
Okay. Andre?
Lord knows that this COVID pandemic has had a lot of unintended consequences, economically, obviously, but no more than our schoolchildren. Kids thrive on interaction, kids thrive on social interaction. And when you're, one, for the safety of their health and their families, you're saying, you can't have a high school graduation you've been looking forward to since you were knee-high to a grasshopper. It hurts, it has an impact. When you're taking students who don't have reliable access to a computer or to internet and saying, now you're learning online, it hurts, it has an impact. When the resources available are limited to keep them safe when they're going to school, it has an impact. Ultimately, I had to agree with Amber on this one. The fact that we just need to make sure that we're following the guidelines set by the state, and if we have an issue with the guidelines that are set by the state, we need to talk to our representatives and address it at that level, because we can't go it alone. MUSD has their own board, has their own governance, and so long as they're doing the steps that they believe are- they believe are right for their members, their community, their students, the city really shouldn't get involved.
Okay. Okay, Nancy asks, what do you think the city can do to improve the heritage district? I'll go with you, Andre.
Well, I know that this has been a project for Rick, and he's been tackling it to help beautify the community there, help bring about quality roadways again, help revitalize it. Our heritage district is exactly that. It's part of our heritage, and it's important to make sure that they are not overshadowed by the growth that we have elsewhere. Our, our culture, our core, our values here in Maricopa started with that little village of 1,500 people, these heritage districts. And I love seeing the plans that Rick has for them, turn them into walking communities, shop space, really help vitalize those areas and create a unique niche for people visiting Maricopa and for our residents.
Okay, great. Amber?
I agree. I just smile and get excited when, when you brought up this topic, because it's really important that we, we value our history and give people an opportunity to enjoy that part of our city. And so I agree, creating that nightlife, creating that downtown experience, I think is going to be really exciting. I can't wait.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. We have a reader asking, or viewer, asking, Amber, what is Maricopa's biggest asset and what is its biggest flaw?
I think our biggest asset is our diversity. It's one of the things I love about Maricopa is, like I've said a couple times, we have people moving here from all over the country, and we're very diverse in many different ways. We have different backgrounds and different ways of thinking, different values, and it's all exciting. We all live in neighborhoods together, and I love opportunities for us to get together, like at festivals and city events where we can share our talents and express ourselves and appreciate the values that each of us bring from our backgrounds. And so I think that's our biggest strength in Maricopa. What an amazing thing to have our diversity, to bring value to our community. I love it.
Okay, Andre?
So I'm going to agree with Amber on that one. It's our community, the folks that make up Maricopa, diversity. She's actually, I'm from Chicago. My wife's from Boston. My neighbors across the street are from Rockford, Illinois. On top of that, I don't know how many people are aware, but inside of the state of Arizona, we have the largest percentage of African Americans. We have 10% population is African American in Maricopa. That kind of diversity from minorities to our native populations that both live in and around us adds to the culture, adds to the feel of Maricopa. You can see so many different points of view every day, much like Amber was talking about. One of the greatest things about running for office is you have an excuse to go talk to people. And that's one of the things I hated about COVID is, one of my favorite things to do is go knock on a door and have a discussion with you. Hey, if you're willing to talk with me, I'll talk with you. I will talk your ear off about Maricopa. I will ask you what you see as opportunities, as growing pains, as, as a citizen, as where did you come from? What did you take from there and bring here? That is what we are. We are a melting pot that's in this little oasis, and it's our greatest strength. Now, when it comes to your other part of the question, what kind of difficulties, opposition, was it?
What's the city's biggest flaw?
Flaw. The biggest flaw we have is our city center is literally the city center. The city governance of Maricopa, our city hall, our police department, our upcoming library, but you wouldn't think that driving in Maricopa, everything is so concentrated on John Wayne, and that creates traffic issues. And it'll take, take the poor folks out in Fortosa out by Volkswagen. They are onto themselves. They have to, they really have fortunately now two reliable routes to come in to the rest of the city from, but they don't have any services available to them. And I want to continue to see us grow out in that direction, grow east and grow south, and really bring businesses and services to our community center and further out so that everyone gets involved and we have a greater opportunity to create the master plan of little villages where we have some identity here, there, and everywhere.
So let me follow up on that. How do you attract the businesses, stores, restaurants, whatever, out to those places before they've built up sufficiently enough that they're more attractive to those kinds of businesses?
Zoning and infrastructure. Making like 238. In a controversial move, Maricopa City Council agreed to help partially fund bringing sewer and water out to Apex along 238. A lot of people felt that Apex should have been paying that entirely on their own. Ultimately, if we had said, yeah, sure, they should only, they should carry the brunt of that, and we should just step back. It's a third party, it's not city-owned, why should we pay? Apex want to be here. Right now, you know, we have the opportunity to turn 238 into a corridor for industry, because we're going to be building this sewer and water, we're helping fund this. And that kind of investment in the infrastructure and quality infrastructure and smart growth, again, goes back to one of the pillars of my campaign. It offers the opportunity for businesses to be able to come in and have a desire to be in Maricopa. On top of that, our continued efforts as a city on working on floodplains. A huge chunk of Maricopa is in floodplains, and it costs a fortune for businesses to physically raise their land up and out of floodplain. Maricopa has a great track record of working with the county and Gila River to help create better opportunities for flood control, to open up land in Maricopa for use, for zoning, for housing, for commercial space. I want to continue those programs. I want to continue working on that.
Okay. Amber, we have a question to you from Tracy. She asks, you are endorsed by the mayor, who is widely known as a Republican. Will that endorsement polarize the voters?
I hope not. I hope not. The conversation that I had with the mayor is that he has just, I think he values my background, and he values the perspective that I can bring to council. It's a little bit different than other people have had in the past, being a counselor, being in education, and being a longtime resident in Maricopa and knowing the history of our community. And so that's the value that he shared with me, that he just values the perspective and background that I bring, and it's different than the current council members that are there. And so I don't, I hope it's not polarizing.
I would hope not, too. Okay. Go to Andre with this one. City council seems to operate often in a public vacuum, I think. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in the city?
Well, unfortunately, that would be a perspective that individuals would have. I would say that we, as a city, have a duty to show up to council meetings, to show up. If you have an opinion on something that's coming up to council, which the program is published a week before, look it up. Go on our website, pull up the docket, find out what's going to be discussed, look at the supporting documentation. If you have an opinion, do a call to the public, express it. Our city council members are members of our community, as I am. I love talking with people, and I know that all the city council members appreciate talking with their constituents. That's how I got involved in this, talking with people. Henry Wade, Marvin Brown, Peggy Chappados, who are three of my supporters, three of my endorsements, talking with them on a regular basis. They're reachable. Their email is published. If you have concern, if you have questions, or if you just want to have an opinion, reach out. I don't know what more the city can do to push that, and we do, the city has a YouTube page. Please watch if you can't make it to city council meetings, if you can't make it to our planning and zoning, watch it online. That way you can be part of it, and you can always express yourself through either YouTube, through email, in person, calls to the public, or just call up your city council.
Amber?
I've so enjoyed building relationships with our current council members and, and seeing their passion for our community and their service attitude for our community, the care and concern that they have. And I know that they care about what our community members feel and think and want to include those in the decisions that they make. And so I agree with everything Andre said, but also, I, I'm a really active community member. I'm out all the time, athletic games, festivals, things like that. So I hope I would be seen as very approachable, and that people could come up and talk to me anytime, in the grocery store, out anywhere, and share their opinions with me. And all the council members' phone numbers and email addresses are on the city website, so we welcome any communication, feedback at any time. So, yeah, blow up our phones.
Very much so.
John asks, Amber, I'll go back to you. What do you think are the three biggest disagreements between you and Andre in terms of how you would serve the city, serve as a council member? You could even throw issues in there if you want.
Yeah, I don't think any disagreements. That's not really how I look at it. Maybe just different perspective or a different way of looking at things. I think what I bring is I'm a problem solver, and I'm very solution-focused. I am not easily distracted. And so when an issue comes up, I just want to solve the problem. I'm not really too concerned about any differences I have with any person. It's really about finding a solution that works best for our community. I am fiscally conservative, and so the budget is important to consider when you're making those decisions. So when I go to make a decision, I'm going to be looking at what's important to our community members, and how do we solve that problem the best way that we can with the resources that we have.
Okay. Andre?
Can I say ditto? Honestly, ultimately, I feel very comfortable saying that. I believe that Amber shares my love for this community and a desire to do what's best for Maricopa, try to get us there where we belong. And we are growing. We are an amazing community. I love saying oasis in the desert, because that's what we are. We're this little green space out in the middle of open land. With that, I, we both believe in quality infrastructure. We're both supporters of law enforcement. We're both fiscally conservative when it comes to the budget. We don't want to spend Maricopa into a hole. My biggest thing is I want to make sure that we're investing appropriately when the opportunity arises. I don't want to be overly worried about, well, you know, if we, you know, spend this now, we don't have this now. Well, let's spend it now, that way we have the opportunities later to profit off of it. I'm a big fan of buying quality, not clearance. Would it be cheaper to go with older methods? Would it be cheaper to go with your lowest-end contractor? Yes, but oftentimes you get what you pay for. I believe in, when we're going to spend the money, we should spend it right, and we should spend it on quality. And moving forward, I absolutely want to support the city in that direction. I really don't, I'm not aware of anything in particular on our campaigns that we disagree about, and it just comes down to the methods, I'd say, that we might be looking at getting there and our experiences. And I'm a small business owner. I worked in the private law enforcement field for a decade and a half, Law, Police, and Health Protection Security. I was a district manager with them. I worked with law enforcement, public law enforcement agencies, local, state, federal, from Chicago to Phoenix to Los Angeles to West Texas. So I'm very familiar with that aspect and what goes into quality law enforcement. Public safety is a huge asset for us, and I want to continue pushing that.
Okay. Question from our viewers. How would you improve, if necessary, the relationship between the city and the school
I'm not aware of any major concerns between MUSD and the city council and the city governance. I've had the pleasure of sitting with the superintendent, and she really felt strongly that Maricopa was a good partner from our discussions. I know that our police department has partnered with them recently on camera upgrades, working to get grants to provide higher-quality coverage for our public schools here in Maricopa. They've also offered to partner with the charter schools area in Maricopa, and some of them have taken the opportunity to have the police department do assessments on the safety and security of their facilities, especially in reference to the unfortunate nature of the school shootings, which has been a hot topic in the past. And if there's one silver lining to COVID and the school shutdowns is we haven't had these tragedies this year, knock on wood. It's been safer in that aspect for our students, and that's a stress that parents haven't had to worry about and communities haven't had to face. But I know our police department has worked tirelessly with MUSD on recommendations, on upgrades, and personnel to provide a safe space for our students in all of our facilities. And that kind of partnership, I want to champion and continue on.
Amber, any thoughts on that?
I think our, our city and schools working together is amazing, and just supporting our families and our community. They do have two different budgets, two different leaderships, so they're very distinct and different, but obviously we want to work together and, because that's just going to benefit our families and make a stronger community. But they are very two, very different programs. I don't know.
And a follow-up on that, another question was, what's your thought regarding the second high school possibly being constructed in the, within the Casa Grande school district boundary?
Yeah, there's so much going on with that right now. I know it's not uncommon for schools to be built outs, you know, outside of the city limit. I know we're not the only city that's considered doing that, but there's just a lot going on right there. I look forward to resolution with that situation. Our, our students need another school. We just do. We are overpopulated at the high school that we have, and until we have another school for our students to attend, there's going to continue to be stress on our students and our staff and our families. And so I'm looking forward to a resolution with that situation.
Andre, anything to add on that?
Oh, God, talk about a can of worms currently. The school district is faced with difficult situations where they didn't get the funding they were hoping for to build the full-size high school that they desired. Land values are skyrocketing right now. The just, the, the real estate is going nuts. You would think COVID would have slowed it down? Uh-uh. No, we're growing leaves and bounds, and that affects MUSD's ability to purchase land. Right now, they have an agreement in place on land that they can afford, and part of the concern I've read is that if they have to forego this and start shopping again, it's going to cost them millions more. And those are millions that will be taken away from being able to provide quality construction and quality facilities in the new high school. But the concerns that are also going on with the farm and the lands around
But the concerns that are also going on with the farm and the lands around, along with the Casa Grande school borders, as I said, a can of worms. I haven't come to a opinion yet. I absolutely do support building a new high school, and I wish MUSD luck and the board luck on this, because wherever they fall, whatever happens, they're not going to have everyone happy.
Another question. Is it legal to use tax dollars to provide affordable commercial space for private businesses? Andre?
Yes, actually, it is legal for cities to sponsor and to fund the development of commercial space. They, whether they fully fund and are considered owners, or they provide sponsored funds, it's not uncommon for government agencies to do that, to help sponsor for third parties. Again, I'll go back to our Global Water. Maricopa's paying a million-plus dollars to help Global Water and Apex build sewer and water lines. Being able to do that also offers Maricopa the ability to diversify income streams off of just solely tax dollars. Many communities have built malls themselves where they would love to have had outside development fund, but outside development wasn't coming in fast enough. And it's provided booms for communities, one that's done right. And I would love to see potential investment where appropriate in such activities, because, again, we have small businesses in Maricopa that are struggling to grow. Commercial space in Maricopa is more expensive than Scottsdale by square footage. There's nothing available because there's nothing here. We're brand-new. And Australia Gen is a perfect example of the city helping to cover costs and work with developers to bring expedited commercial space.
Okay. Amber?
I don't have anything to add.
Somebody asks, what is the city's relationship with the local Muslim community? And I'll just add on, and what can be done to strengthen that relationship?
That's a great question. I'll need to learn more about that. I don't really have an answer for that right now, so I'll learn more about it.
I'm going to say the same. I know that Maricopa is very good about generally staying out of religion, and you had your First Amendment rights and separation of church and state, and that's the way I believe it should stay. Any organization, any religious organization that wants to do the invocation for city council and other associated meetings has the open invitation to request. Beyond that, I'm not aware enough of our relationship.
How will you treat, evaluate the general plan and zoning changes in the city?
Well, so we have our Planning and Zoning Commission to review that, and they do a wonderful job. They are mandated to perform this duty, and then Maricopa City Council oversees this and takes their considerations and the recommendations into account. Ultimately, city council are not subject matter experts on this. We are meant to be representatives of the public to make policy decisions and budgetary decisions. So when it comes to planning and zoning, listening to the experts and listening to those that are trained in it is going to be the best.
Amber?
I agree with that, and also just making sure that we're including the community members in those decisions, which I know is part of that procedure. But just making sure, as a city council member, I would be really interested in the feedback that P&amp;Z is getting from the community members when it's presented.
Okay. I'm going to close this. One more question for both of you, and then provide you 30 seconds or so, just to wrap up in your own words, let you speak directly to the voters. So in 2016, on the campaign trail, a young boy in New Hampshire asked Hillary Clinton this very deep question. He asked, what is the most important part of life like out of all things? Which I thought was a great question. Amber, we'll lead off with you.
I do love that question, and it's family. I mean, family is the most important part of life. And my slogan for my campaign is strong family, strong community. The stronger our families are, the stronger our community is. The stronger our families are, it takes the burden off of our public safety. It takes the burden off of our school system. So we want to make sure that we support our family system in Maricopa every way that we can do that. One of the things I'm really passionate about is social services, and I'd like to, hopefully, if I get elected, really strengthen and expand and support our social services here in Maricopa. We have families in Maricopa that have a spouse, a parent, a child with a chronic medical or mental health condition that requires them to seek service on a regular basis. And this can be really taxing on a family. And so I want to make sure that we're utilizing and inviting those services to Maricopa so we can strengthen those for our families, so we don't have to leave 347 as often, and we can remove, again, those obstacles and barriers to those families receiving the services that they need. And another thing I'm really passionate about is making sure that we're referring to each other in Maricopa within those organizations, because I hear a lot about families leaving Maricopa to seek medical and mental health services that are offered right here in Maricopa. And I think part of that is our community members maybe don't know that we offer those services, or they're getting referrals from providers in Maricopa that are outside of Maricopa. So I want to make sure that our providers are aware of the services that are offered in Maricopa, and those relationships are being built within that social service group so that we're referring to each other and building that system here in Maricopa.
Okay. Andre?
Family and community. Honestly, they're one in the same, and it just depends on how big you draw your circle. Your roof, your block, your neighborhood, your city. Everyone has potential of being a member of your family, whether it be, I'll take my life, my wife, my infant son, my mother-in-law and sister-in-law who live with me, and then I expand that out a little. My neighbors, who I bring in trashcans for, or they'll loan me theirs. Amazon's shown up one too many times at my house this week, and I'm overloaded with boxes to reduce and recycle. And then neighborhood. I run the neighborhood watch for Ranch U Alderado, because the safety of not just my house, but my family as a neighborhood is important to me, and I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to communicate, to share what's going on, what they're seeing. I'll often share information from the Maricopa Police Department, or canal sheriffs, or elsewhere that can provide a little insight for people on how to keep their households safer, how to keep their property safer, how to keep people healthy and happy. And then, as a city council member, I want to extend that family circle out to the entire community again, to include all of Maricopa. I'm here, I live here, out of every city imaginable, whether it be in the Phoenix area or across the country. I could move back to the Chicago area, or I can move to my wife's old neck of the woods back in the Boston area. But we chose to live here because Maricopa is unique to us. It has opportunities, it has culture, it has people. I knew my mayor, I knew my aldermen, but I never saw them back home. You didn't see them in the grocery store, you didn't have the chance to walk up and talk to them like we do here. It's unique to Maricopa. It makes us family, and that is the single most important thing that you can ever have in life, is that connection.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you 30 seconds to address the voters directly.
Well, again, I want to thank you, Bob, and I want to thank In Maricopa for having us and allowing this opportunity. Amber, thank you again. It's been an absolute pleasure. I don't know if you guys can see this, or if it's just on me, but, you know, when she smiles, it just lights up. Thank you to all my supporters for listening in. Thank you for people who are just generally curious about where we stand on policies, where we stand in our campaigns. I am looking forward to answering any further questions. I'm honored to have the endorsements of three former city council members, Henry Wade, Marvin Brown, and Peggy Chappados. I am honored to have the endorsement of Julia Gussi, former councilwoman, or continuing councilwoman. I am honored to be endorsed by the largest police union in Maricopa, the Fraternal Order of Police. I'm honored to be endorsed by the fire union. I'm also honored to have bipartisan endorsements from registered Democrats and Republicans, because it's important to represent everyone and be there for everyone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Amber?
I also want to thank you, Bob. It's always good to see you. Thank you, In Maricopa, and it's great to see you. Andre, thank you so much. I just want to thank the community for this opportunity and all the support that I've received. It's been an incredible, humbling experience, and I've learned so much, and I have a lot more to learn, and I'm excited about that. The reason that I am hoping to secure the seat for city council is because I really do have a passion to preserve and promote the values that I've experienced in Maricopa the last 17 years. This community is really important to me. I have children that live here, and I have the students that I work that live here and their families, and I am passionate about serving them at a different level. I've been volunteering in Maricopa since the day I got here, and this is just another opportunity on a different level to serve the families here, and I hope I get the opportunity to do that. And I also, I want to thank Mayor Price for endorsing me and trusting me in that way. State Representative Brett Roberts has endorsed me, and Maricopa, a lot of other people have endorsed me, and so I'm so appreciative of that. And so I humbly ask for your vote on November 3rd.
All right, well, on behalf of In Maricopa and our viewers on Facebook, I'd like to thank you both for joining us tonight, and we wish you the best the next couple of weeks of the campaign.
Thank you.
Thank you.